6th day of call special work session meeting of September 21st is ordered. We do have a forum, public forum individuals may address the city council about items not included on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for council record and limited remarks in three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items that fall within the authority of the city council. Generally, the city council will not take official action on items discussed at this time, but may place the item on file, take the matter under advisement, refer the matter to staff or a committee for future report or direct the matter to be placed on an upcoming agenda. Does anyone wish to speak?
Good evening, Mayor Delka and Councilman, I'm Kathy Lang at 165 Riverwood Drive. And I'm just here this evening to address the petition for that Elm Street cul-de-sac that goes at the end of the road and ask your consideration to restore it to its original size before city water and sewer were on that street. A communication between me and Byron Smith, I'm actually representing him, that wants that restored. Right now there's a chain covering his driveway or covering the entrance to the driveway. And he may return by the looks of the appeals court that he'll get a new trial, so we will need to remove that. And we'll need some kind of warning, it seems as though the traffic from Highway 10 seems to think that that's an exit onto 10 and they're turning around either at the end of that road or also at the end of our driveway. We've lost countless mailboxes from large trucks, I've even seen a semi try to turn around down there. So I think for a safety issue and for a traffic issue, I would appreciate your consideration in restoring that to its originality prior to sewer and water down that road. Do any of you have any questions about it? I know you had a report in the petition.
Is there a "D A N" sign right there that they may not see that?
It says private drive, but I don't think the signage on the exit to 10 is very large. Maybe that's an answer or a question or something, but there's a large amount of traffic that happened down those way. I think the cul-de-sac would help that, so. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wish to speak?
Reverend Robin Hensel, 807 First Street Southeast. Another mayor, another lost opportunity to work for peace and acknowledge International Peace Day in this city. I requested that the past mayor acknowledge through a proclamation, Peace Day in years past. Wars are won by weapons, but peace is won by ideas. We are facing a phenomenon that the West has not known since the wars of religion in the 16th and 17th century. When they ended in one place, they began in another and they lasted for more than a century. The same factors present then are present now. Discontent with existing power widely conceived to have been corrupt, then the Catholic Church today, secular nationalists, regians. Protest taking a religious form and attempt to get back to the pristine purity of the faith as it was in the beginning. And a revolution in information technology which allowed what would otherwise have been marginal, disaffected groups to outflank all existing structures of power. First, it's not clear that we have yet obeyed Robert McComara's fundamental rule, understand your enemy's psychology. Second, wars are won by weapons, but peace is won by ideas. Lastly, if religion is part of the problem, then religion must be part of the solution. Religious leaders must be recruited and brought together as a recognized element to the global response to tyranny and terror. Whether this is done in the form of a track two diplomacy and specific conflict zones or under the rubric of Article 18 of the United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights or simply as a body directed to establishing the parameters of religious education so that we can teach the world's children not to hate those with whom they must one day learn to live. This is the battle we can and must win for every kind of reason, political, moral, religious, and humanitarian. We live today in a world in which people are killing in the name of God, the God of life, waging war in the name of the God of peace, and practicing cruelty in the name of God of compassion. There comes a time when we, whatever our faith, have to stand and say, not in God's name. And the sooner the better, the sooner we do it together, the better. That is part of a speech given by Rabbi Lord Sacks at UK Israel Shared Strategic Challenges Conference in Westminster. I ring this bell in honor of International Peace Day today and every day on September 21st worldwide. There are numerous celebrations going on all around the world today, but not in this town.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could quickly respond. Robin, just so you know, we had talked about it at our agenda planning meeting. And typically I sign proclamations. And when I was speaking with Dan, he thought that it was best that this would be an action of the council rather than me proclaiming it, and we agreed upon that. And unfortunately, when we had that conversation, we didn't have time to get it on an agenda before this. And I couldn't do a roll call, that would be a...
Serial.
Yeah, that'd be a serial meeting, which would be a violation. We do have the option of having a minute of peace. So I've studied it, I've studied the mayors for peace and seen how many communities are involved in that in Minnesota. And also Dan did listserv to see which cities in Minnesota have celebrated the International Day of Peace. And I believe you got a reply from Bloomington, was it?
Bloomington, yeah, but I've heard of Northfield. I was dealing with the closing, that's it.
So I apologize if I missed the opportunity. The intentions were good, but I was not going to have a serial meeting and then be in trouble for the legal meeting. So hopefully we'll have it researched and won't miss the opportunity next year. And I'm still looking into the mayor for peace, and I see there's four Minnesota cities that are involved in that. There's like 6,000 some members, so I'm not just being worried, I want you to know that.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Why do you not ask the council to help you decide to proclaim other things then?
If it's a single day, like for, I can't think of some of the BMW or Poppy Day, that's just something that's always been done. And so to do something different, to recognize something, I just feel that it should be a decision of the council. That's a personal feeling, not anything written in law.
But the mayor makes the proclamation.
Yes, he does, but this one I would be more comfortable with the input from my council.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else wish to speak? Here and now, move on to regular agenda items. Little Falls Baseball Organization update, Rusty Gwast.
Hi, I'm Rusty Gwast. And I guess I'm here this evening to give you kind of an update as to what we've been up to this summer working with the school district. I grew up in Little Falls and played ball here myself. I graduated from Little Falls and I'm back here now living with my family. My wife teaches here, I teach at Royalton. I've been with the Youth Baseball Association for a number of years. High school coach for 15 years, coached collegiate league. Not much, if anything, has changed in the situation in town with ballparks. In fact, we have less opportunity now than we did in '89 when I graduated from here. And we have more kids playing. And so this summer I started exploring the opportunity of trying to get something built for our kids. We send a lot of kids out of town every weekend in the summer. And we don't ever get to play home game, we don't even have fields to practice on that we can count on. Many times we go, we call practice at a certain field and then find out later if it's already being used or somebody else is doing it. We don't have a baseball field. To my count, there's one official baseball field in town, and that's the flyer field. So with all that being said, I started soliciting and talking to businesses, business owners, baseball family members, people in town who were kind of passionate about it, like I wasn't, to see what could be done. And found out that there was quite a bit of support from people and many people around the area that would be interested in helping. And so the big question would be where would we do it? And I didn't feel like we were in the position to buy any land. But after speaking with Mr. Jones at the high school superintendent and knowing that there was some available land through the school district, we started the conversation about possibly working together with the school and building a youth complex. And the youth complex would solve one of our problems because we have so many youth, not just the traveling youth, but hundreds of kids in the summer that participate in community services. And then the middle school baseball and elementary schools don't have fields as well. We also have another dilemma where our JV and our freshman kids don't have a home complex. We're sending our kids now to Sobeyski to play baseball because we don't have a ballpark for them. So we realized there's a strong need. I just left the Little Falls school board meeting and I've kind of done the same thing. I'm trying to let people know that I feel like I've come up with a large enough list of people who are supporting this effort. We're hoping to form a partnership with the Little Falls school system where they would help us with some land. And specifically right now, we're thinking possibly the Bell Creek complex. And in working in a partnership with the soccer to maybe be able to have, to help each other, to make sure that they have enough space for their needs, to be able to find a way to utilize the rest of that space to provide parking and also maybe provide a nice concession stand bathroom type place. We feel it would be a huge asset for the community. As we see what we do when we leave town and we go and there's hundreds of people gathering at ballgames and what it does for local restaurants and hotels. So we're hoping that by doing this as a community and utilizing these resources and getting together and doing it with our baseball families and our community that we feel like we'll accomplish a whole bunch by doing it together. And we're hoping that as the conversation continues that we're going to get the support from the school that seems like what we're asking for is the land and some maintenance help and we're going to try and come up with the resources to build it. So I guess I'm coming this evening to make sure that you're informed and up to speed on what I've been up to, what we've been up to, the conversations we've had as a school district and the baseball community. And just hoping to move forward and try and get some of the needs met for some of the kids. I will share that it really hit me this summer when my last youngster, who was eight years old, played baseball this year and both grandparents couldn't come see his first baseball game. They watched from binoculars in the parking lot because they couldn't get close enough to a ballpark. Because the ballparks that we play at here are all the way across the field and just have a backstop. And it really hit me at that point that, you know, I'm from this community and I just want to try and help make this a better place. And if we can help by doing a ballpark that these kids play in and if it helps the economy of our city and makes us stronger, then it'll be something for all of us to be really proud of. So I guess I just want to keep you in the loop as what we're doing and hope for your support. Any questions for me?
Mr. President, first a question possibly, but I would like to comment first. So you know, we've had committees for 25, 30 years trying to get this done and we haven't gotten nowhere. That's taken long enough. I've heard stories of them using our softball fields and having to stop the game because softball was starting. And I've umpired for many years and parents have driven up and said, is this the seventh grade game? No, this is the ninth grade game, where's the seventh grade game? Well, that's behind Pine Hill Park, chasing people from out of town all over the place. I think economically in the summer, this would be great for our community because I've gone to tournaments. Now it's no longer just one parent there, it's parents, grandparents, uncles and aunts because I've been the uncle that's been at them and up to Brainerd. And there's 300 people at it and they stay for three or four days. So I think it's of an economic benefit for the city. And as we were discussing and meeting, I met with the schools and talking about our support not being at this time as much financial as far as the possibility of whether or not we have an engineer who could spend a little time help placing the fields out there. And, you know, we said we would talk with Greg and we talked with the council and see what the thoughts were. But I think it's a great idea, it's long overdue and I think it's going to be a great benefit for the community. And thank you for your work and I hope you take it all the way because of something that's been due for a long time.
Thank you. Is that your...
Yes, sir. You know, we put together a pretty good plan out at the area recreation center out there. Tried to get a sales tax thing going, which almost passed, we didn't push it hard. I think that would be more cost effective going that route, we had everything in place. We would have people coming into our community who use our community paying on this, which would lighten the burden on the local people. I mean, I'm all in favor to get a baseball complex going, always have been. And it's been needed a long time. I just feel there is probably a more cost effective way. If we were to pursue that avenue versus sticking it there, they're even close to one another. So either way, one of the two ways I think is important to get going. And if Rusty's willing to pursue it, don't take that away. So I think Rusty would tell you, my first desire was next to our playground. And probably the major advantage is the school is willing. That field is pretty much prepped as far as the base, there won't be any purchase. And we would have to probably pass that half percent and purchase a little bit of land for parking, from what I heard. So I brought that to him and he'll tell you that. And I think it would be a great fit out there. But, you know, if they're going to end up waiting five, 10 more years for us to come up with money and the land, I can see why he would be ready to pull the trigger now.
Yeah, in our discussions, it truly was the quickest way to get our kids on the field playing ball. Because the grass is already ready, it would literally be hopefully dropping in some fence, cutting out some base paths. You know, we would try and save and utilize what's already been set up there, which is some really nice grass that's been watered and taken care of, the school district would continue to water and mow if this all works. And we would try to, you know, not interfere with what's already been accomplished for the soccer folks, but then try to utilize the rest of that space that currently isn't being used. And then, you know, try to work in some parking and turn it into a complex that we can all share and use.
That was a big holdup, we had the discussion about putting it there before the parking issue. We just won't have it. The arc area would have the parking issue, I mean, we could take care of that. You could put two diamonds out there if you were looking for three. Well, one way or another, let's hope to get this thing going.
Yeah, I agree.
How do you feel do you need to host a tournament? Pardon me? Field wise, how many fields do you need to host a tournament?
Well, I think three is no less than three. Yeah, I mean, you could have one field to host a tournament if it's a very small tournament. You know, typically when we go to tournaments out of town, we're at a complex with at least three made, most of the time four. And, you know, I think that, I think it's, it really is, you know, how many can we get in there and make it work really well without being too cramped and the parking thing is an issue? And so we got to look at, that's why we're going to, I mean, ideally we'd like to sit down and get some drawings to see if it actually is going to work. And nothing has been final there, it just seems like, I think from a taxpayer standpoint, if that land is the school district's and it's being used for soccer and there's some remaining land that's actually not being used, it makes the most sense before we go tear up another area to try to utilize all of that space. And there is, in my eyes, there's a nice row of unused land that's got trees on it right now that, you know, those trees aren't probably getting close to the end of their life cycle. We could probably remove some of those and create some parking space. And also maybe with the ballparks that we have in mind, we have planned on planting trees for shade anyway and bringing in some good sized trees, so we replace some of that.
It is frustrating sitting on a group, working real hard, coming up with plans, only to watch them kind of disappear.
I'm surprised somebody's coming back to the table because there's been so much disappointment, so it takes a lot of passion. I know Rusty has.
Well, what's happened in a lot of the communities around us is that it hasn't, I just feel like right now, you know, the clock is ticking on our kids and nobody's going to offer me a million dollars to go build a ballpark for whatever people might think it costs. So I pictured it almost, and it sounds kind of funny, but almost like an Amish barn raising me. You know, a lot of things get done when the community gets involved. And there are several people who have offered to their resources with equipment and donation with labor. And we've got several financial backers. And I just feel like I have a big enough commitment right now that we could go break some ground this weekend if we have the places to do it and get started. And I feel like if we get started, at this time, it'll actually happen.
And there's a lot of opportunities for grants we've talked about.
Right, and that's the other thing, I'm kind of, right now, I'm kind of sitting on a lot of opportunities at grant money because we just need to know our site and have an official plan and have it all laid out so that we can pursue that and be accurate with our numbers.
Any other questions for Rusty?
Thank you.
Thank you. Petition, Elm Street?
Yeah, at the last council meeting, you received a petition for restoration on Elm Street. We did, or I did verify the signatures on the petition. So coming up on a future date here, at our future council meetings, we will accept that petition and then possibly go forward with incorporating the feasibility report, the 4.9 process, to see if we want to move forward with installing that cul-de-sac at the request of the property owner there. So just wanted to give you a couple of little update on that, that we did receive that, we did verify the signatures, and that will be forthcoming at future council meetings.
Did you look into maybe two different ways if there's a possibility of putting better signage, blinking lights versus going through the expense of putting a cul-de-sac, which is probably less expensive?
We can look at that in the feasibility report, I haven't really gone too far into it at this point in time.
Okay.
Hasn't there been a promise made that it would be restored to its original condition?
I don't believe there was a promise made, but we will look into that to see if there was or not.
Because if that's the case, it should be restored to that position without assessment.
And we'll look into that, we'll talk to the parties that were involved at the time and see what was, what transpired.
Do you have a picture of what it used to be?
We can get one, yes. Our consultant at the time would have that information and we would incorporate that into the feasibility report.
Any other questions for your account?
May I ask a question, Mr. President?
No, not at this time, thank you. Budget line, please, Lauren.
So in your packet, it is the levy recap that Dan had shown to the council at the last council meeting. We had discussed doing the options of a three, a four, or a five percent levy increase. In the packet, tonight their resolution is there with an A, B, and C, one with a three percent, one with a four, and one with a five percent. The council really can, you know, set the levy at what you want. We can always come down with the levy, the levy cannot go up. Anybody have any questions regarding it? Or I think Dan might have some information regarding our tax rate. I have not looked at that, I don't know.
Well, Lori, we discussed this, I think, at our last meeting, that with water treatment, you know, we were on 167,000 or whatever for the study. And I think it's important that we make sure we have enough money so we're not just throwing away 167,000 dollars. I think we need to follow through with that and we have to take that into consideration with fees and with the levy.
Consider water sewer rates and stuff.
Yeah.
You know, in the past, we've always, it's always been brought up how Piers hasn't raised their levy probably nine years. But their cost for water, sewer, things like that are higher than ours. And I noticed this year, Piers has to pursue the levy, catching up with them. You have to pay for things and whatever we do on this, we have to plan for the future. Like you're saying, we have two issues, not only water, but also our sewer plant needs a lot of modification out there. So I think now is time, instead of trying to keep everything that's there, all that we have, plan for the future here, maybe just try to try and get some money in so we can take care of these problems.
We can also take care of them through fees, that's what they're paying for.
I think a combination.
We're listening, when you think about your, you know, talking about fees, it don't differ then if you have your own septic or well, eventually you have to replace it and you have to come up with the money, so would you take out a loan or come up with it?
Correct.
Taxpayers are going to have to come up with the money to replace it and move on. Raise our fees for a flat rate for 10 years to cover our waste park plan? That's what we need to do.
I prefer to see it through fees.
Fees than taxes.
Well, and if we would adopt the 4.99, we may have to leave it at that.
Correct, correct, we can always work our way down. Budgets can go up and down, levy cannot. Once you set the levy, you can only come down with your levy and you can't go up with your levy. I mean, we have a lot of needs, whether it's equipment needs, we have staffing needs, you know, we have street overlays, different street projects. I mean, we have a lot of things that we need and we just need to get through that budget process and try and prioritize and determine, you know, what is really the need and what isn't wanted and figure out how much that's all the cost.
I think that's a good thing, know exactly what we have to spend, figure in what the cost of living, the increase is going to be. And look at seeing just how much our fees would be, if we went that route or levies. But it has to be paid for, now is the time, we need to know this, we can't wait five more years. So if we come up with a cost, what it's going to cost us, we can tell the community that this is how much your fees are going to jump up in order to make that. Or we could tell them we could do it a little different way, maybe a combination of fees and levy and see what goes down best.
You know, unfortunately, we don't have numbers from the county yet as far as what our tax capacity is for P 2016. If we had that, you know, that would be helpful as well to know what it does to our tax rate. But those numbers aren't available yet. Hopefully we'll have at least an idea, they should have their preliminary abstract done by the time we actually set levies. So that, you know, that'll be helpful as we go through that budget process again to see what the tax capacity is and what that does to our tax rate.
Do they always do it after you have to set this? Can't they ever work forward and get it so it's on time to know what you're doing?
It would be nice, but, I mean, and we're not the only city in this predicament, every city in the county. And along with the county itself, you know, they all are setting levies, the school district, everybody is setting levies right now. And we don't have preliminary numbers.
And it's not his county, it's not just Morrison County, it's, we have the same issue with the Corbway. As long as it's there, we just don't, the assist was off. And it's, and it's not his county, it's not just Morrison County, it's, we have the same issue with the Corway, of, as long as it's there, we just don't, the system's obvious, just doesn't have evaluations done yet.
And they have, they...
And that's not unusual, it's not, I'm not knocking that at all.
They have statutory deadlines that they have to meet to get their stuff done, but there's a very short window of time, you know, from, from when transfers take place and, and when they can get all their stuff updated for the next year, so.
I think, just as a, a little reference, maybe a, a reference to Lauren's point earlier, I think our wage increases next year are two and a half?
I believe so.
Yeah, so a two and a half percent wage adjustments. Remember, most of your budgets, you provide service, so it's not like you're, you know, buying a lot of other stuff, most of your budgets with personnel, so that makes a big adjustment. Now, I think we're lucky that our health insurance isn't going to go up at all, I think we have zero on, on that, so that, that's helpful. But I just wanted to show you a little bit, um, additional information based on what we had talked about last night, uh, last time, last time, um, just... Top right. I mean, this is kind of the area that, that's the midpoint of all this, is about fifty-eight percent. Actually, the Leighton Magazine had cities in our size is about, the average is about sixty, so it's right in, in this area. Uh, here you can see that I do have the 2015 data, that's what I was missing last time, it just came off from the Leighton Minnesota Cities. We're at seventy-six, uh, we're at seventy-eight, we were at seventy-eight. Grand Rapids actually was below us, but now they've jumped ahead of us, so we dropped one, um, from the, just the city standpoint. This is on day 2015, just for the city portion. I also have information, uh, that I showed you last time, but, uh, it's kind of an update here because it has 2015 information, uh, where we relate from a total tax standpoint. That's what, I mean, that's what the taxpayers see, um, you know, they see what their total tax is, city, county, schools, special taxing districts. We're at one fifty-three thirty-seven last year, or, yeah, 2014, P-2015 is one fifty-one. Actually, we dropped three spots, and where we were last year, we dropped three spots, uh, and this is kind of, you know, the average area in there. So, you know, we have a little bit of a, of a trend down, the information that you have in front of you as far as the tax stuff, I mean, has that well, where we did see a, a drop. And that's because we had some pretty big increases in what we've ever made there. Went up about ten percent, but actually our, our rate went down because of the valuation increase for the area that annexed into the north, uh, on the north part of the city that came in. So, um, you know, as we said, we, we looked at a, a three, four, or five, wages went up, or going up, two and a half. Yeah, I'll just give you some idea, I'm working in Cross Lake, they're going up to about fifteen percent, that's what their preliminary level went up, I think it'll stay pretty close to that. Brainerd's preliminary went up twenty-five percent, not to say that, that that should happen, but just to give you an idea of what's happening, uh, in the area, um, you know, two, three, or three, four, or five, I, I mean, it's really up to you. You can come down, can't go up, we've had a history of coming down, um, at least over the time I've been here, it probably has been the, the same, uh, one, so. Anyway, I don't have really, uh, other information for you, you have other information. You've got resolutions in your, uh, in your packet, a resolution, as it's seen over on the side, A, B, or C, uh, and it's on your, in your packet. You can adopt whatever resolution you feel comfortable with, or something other than A, B, or C, it doesn't have to be, okay, I'll proceed. Over the next several months, so if you're new administrator, they'll be talking about your, um, your budget and levy, all the specific numbers will be coming in, and you'll get an idea of where this, uh, this point is coming from. You've got a lot of roads that are, you know, in need of repair, that's a lot, and that's levy, um, you've got repairs and maintenance, uh, we used to do about seventy-five thousand a year, I think we're up to quarter of a million or something, or...
Two hundred and fifty-three hundred thousand.
Yeah, two hundred and three hundred, so, I mean, you know, you've got, you've got some issues, and you don't assess everything. I mean, if you, if you do something with, with streets and you're not assessing it, I mean, the taxpayers are paying, so, general tax. Yeah, it's up to you.
Any other questions for Dan?
At what point do we determine the percentage of assessment done?
Well, that's a, you have an assessment policy on that, up, that's what, half the cost of reconstruction, what is it?
And it's in our fee schedule, we usually adopt the fee schedule and decide.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I meant. You'd think finding this CPI would be a simple research, but it's a dangerous, like, I can tell you.
I, I actually, we get a report, and I can go grab it if you're interested in what it is, I just, I didn't do that.
You know, looking at this, it's kind of refreshing that we're not looking at twenty percent like Rayner. In last, past years, we've had some large numbers be located at the preliminary, and then we dropped down. In fact, last year, nine point nine nine, we still brought it down. We're not even looking at any of that value, which is a good feeling, but...
Wouldn't bring it down to a...
Well, last year, what did we start on that, twelve percent? We brought it down to nine point nine nine. Uh, at four point nine nine, I feel comfortable in the case of there is something we really have to discuss, at least we have some area to play with. We don't look at that as a concrete number, we're still going to bring it down as low as we can, we just have, so I just, my way of looking at it, I would like to have that higher cap in case if it is needed. It's all about getting the money into the city and the areas that we need it, so by living ourselves.
Because how many families been built, this is how much I want to spend next year, Greg, I need to be paid more.
Well, you have to look at it that this isn't concrete, it's just if we need it, but we have brought it down every year. So this isn't, I mean, you could say two point nine nine, and then we need it three point nine, then what are we going to do with the rest of it, or where's it going to come from?
And I think we'll attempt to pare down the, uh, the fees, uh, and the other part of it is, I would be embarrassed if we didn't have enough to follow through on that water treatment plan and explain to the taxpayers that we threw away one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, and, and I know, I believe they said that'd be good for a year, wasn't that epic? So, uh, you know, we had that discussion and voted on that, and, um, I would think that we would all, as we have the discussion, decide how we're going to pay for it, that if possible, we're going to bring, wherever we're at, bring it down as much as we can, once again, knowing we can't raise it. So it's easier to go down from four point nine nine than to not go up from two point nine nine.
Excuse me, Congressman, I did, um, go pull the CPI file, and it looks like for this year, it's at pretty much a zero percent. For the Midwest region, I don't print off the United States average, I just do the Midwest region one, um, and it looks like it's pretty much at a zero percent. And I think a lot of that is attributed to fuel, because the price of gas has gone down.
This is on your regular agenda, your nine A, B, C, D, so, um, we'll have another shot at this one, and, uh, you know, a lot of, uh...
One golf course superintendent, manager, men job description, and I'll grid reposting.
I included a, uh, a memo in your packet regarding the job description and the recommendation to change it from superintendent to manager. As I noted, we got the nineteen applications, and really, there was one or possibly two that had all of the qualifications we needed, um, and we just didn't think that's enough to pull to really choose from. Felt that, um, we wanted someone that had more of a well-rounded, or a number of people that we could choose from that have more well-rounded, um, experience level on a golf course. And felt that superintendent, we'd be connotation, it's just a, it's kind of an outside job, it's a superintendent of grounds and not all those items in the clubhouse. And we also changed a couple of minimum requirements around a, a little bit, pesticide applicators, we added as a minimum requirement, and, and most people didn't have that. That they weren't, uh, they didn't have the license, and we thought it made more sense to put that, that they get it or be able to obtain it within six months of hiring. Same with Minnesota food handler's license, had to have that up to the minimum requirements because they have to have that license in order to run, have food on that operation. So felt that it, uh, would like to, uh, recommend that we change to a golf course manager instead of superintendent. We would then, uh, advertise the position again, hopefully grow the pool of candidates for the position, let the people know that, that have applied, that will keep their, uh, application, and include them in the process, uh, down the road. Uh, and then we would, um, have the new administrator, who will start next Monday, have him much more involved in the, uh, process moving forward, which I know that a number of you are, are very interested in, uh, doing. So, um, you know, we're getting towards the end of the year, it's not as critical, I don't think, but things have been running, uh, albeit somewhat rocky out there, but they have been running. You know, things will continue to move forward, we're getting towards the end of the year, we don't see in the September, it won't be a lot of help, uh, too much longer, so.
Dan, you did say that we do have someone on staff that has Minnesota pesticides application license grant.
Yeah, dude.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And then we do have...
Dale hasn't, we don't have anybody that has, do we have anybody that has a food handle?
No.
I have one.
So with these changes, how many of these nineteen will fall where they could be considered candidates then?
Well, I don't think it improves the...
Doesn't improve their chances at all, so...
And the app, the application, I'll be honest with you, the applications are pretty weak. Uh, and, and maybe it was time of year, I, I'm sorry to cut you off, maybe it was a little bit of time of year, you know, advertising in July and August, you know, people are still working, and they don't want to le- leave those jobs. And we have that comment, you know, hopefully it's towards the end of the season, I might be interested, because I'm geared up for the next golf season. I think it'll grow the pool of candidates, we're hopeful that it does, can't be guaranteed.
But in essence, you know, there's seventeen people would probably fall to the side either way.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it necessarily improves the pool, the current pool. But this is on consent, if you want to pull it from consent, you're welcome to do that, otherwise we can have our discussion, uh, now, but, uh, it doesn't change anything, we're not talking about pay grade change, we're talking about title change. And we'll need a couple of, uh, requirements along, uh, within the, uh, the job description. Hopefully, again, that, that title will hopefully, again, well, people, qualified people will...
It doesn't really hurt to lower the minimums needed, uh, because we'll be able to see inner application working out.
Yeah, and they've got to get it within six spots, you might, maybe you still have that, and they have probation period, I'm assuming they have probation period here, there's a contract, so, maybe still on some jobs.
Any questions on that one?
I saw the daily deposits were crossed out, did that get moved to somebody else?
Um, we have for, oh, it's been several years now, we actually do the daily deposit here. They, they reconcile it at the, um, at the end of the day, and just for checks and balances, you know, when the auditors were in, so we had that segregation of duties, um, they, they count out their till and recap everything, we bring it here through the deposit. We've done that for several years.
Any other questions? Anything on your other, have you got anything? Lauren?
Yes, sir, I have two items. Last time I assisted, I had a report of the Camp Reckoning Environmental, which I forgot the point is here. Uh, there's also a pin, if any of you have collections of pins, here's one from the Audubon Society, you can feel free to add it to your collection. Uh, this is available, I'll leave it out here on the table if, if nobody looks at it now. Another thing is, uh, you all received the Minnesota Cities Magazine, and on page twenty-one, there was a very timely article. Uh, it states that city governments are largely left out of the act of regulation of firearms. However, state law does leave one area available for local regulation by authorizing municipal governments to regulate the discharge of firearms by ordinance. I looked on the, uh, website for the ordinance, and, uh, it popped up as ordinances, I clicked on ordinances, and it said, see city hall. Uh, so that apparently is in the process of being adapted or something or another. But, uh, one thing they say here, that cities are able to prohibit the discharge of firearms completely, or limit the types and times of firearm discharge to allow for certain types of hunting or recreational use. I have heard, and I have heard many complaints in the last week or so about shotguns firing on the river in the city. Uh, for years, people have hunted waterfall on the river, uh, especially north of town, but now they have been annexed, and they realize, oh, wait a minute, I'm, I'm in the city, can I do this? Uh, there have been a lot of complaints, talking with the DNR, uh, they have said very clearly that within the city limits is responsibility of the city police, not the DNR. It is also a case where I'm not sure that the city police are in a position to have the watercraft available to chase these guys down. So it's a case where I, I would like to see either the planning commission or the park board review the ordinance that we have here in Pendleton Falls to determine exactly what this is, so that we can either accept it, modify it, whatever, but be sure that people know and understand what's going on.
Mr. President, I mean, uh, Lauren, we actually did order a couple of signs for, uh, the two boat accidents in Little Falls that show, they both say the, the Little Falls ordinance, as well as the map of the city limits, so that anybody putting a boat in at the landings, both east and west side in Little Falls, can, can see those areas, so they know, uh, where they can and cannot discharge firearms.
But that's if they start in Little Falls, if they live in Belle Prairie and have been hunting there for years, you know, there, there's no way to, to, to inform them or, or control that.
True.
And it's a case where I think the ordinance, and it says that we can allow hunting if we decide that's, that's possible. And that's where I would like to see a review of that ordinance, so that we have a chance to look at it and to see what, what we feel would be best for the community.
Well, if we can't, at least it would also allow it on the river, because I'm, I'm not advocating that, but my point is, is if we can't do anything about it, now we're allowing people to break the law and not doing anything about it. Because I've, for years, and I know we just annexed, but there's always been shooting that I can hear from miles, and I'm sure the folks in the crowd and Mr. Hercock and all of our neighborhood, uh, Greg, you must be able to hear it, I can hear your place too. So we're gonna have to find a solution one way or the other, because if we can't enforce it...
Do the city limits begin at the shore or in the middle of the river, where one side is city and one side's not?
The middle of the main channel.
Okay, I, I was gonna ask the same question. So basically, north of town, if they're on the west side of the river, they can still hunt.
True, true, and the main channel obviously does weave back and forth, um, but that's what we tried to depict on that, that map at both ends, is where that, that split is located. You know, it does show, you know, some islands in, some islands are not in the city limits, um, but I do have the city ordinance up here on the screen behind us if you're here to read it. It's basically that top one there.
What is the acceptance permitted by state law? Does state law allow?
I don't know the answer. Tony, do you by chance?
I don't know anything specifically other than obviously self-defense, you know, situations, things like that, extermination of a dangerous dog. Our police force can obviously discharge a weapon in the city limits if necessary. And yes, things would be things like that. That would be many else.
I was surprised there's BB guns on there.
Don't think a whole lot of people follow that one.
No. You would calibrate these. If it's quiet, it's not seeing a pair, I think.
But who would be appropriate to refer this to?
The planning commission or the park and recreation committee.
Well, probably the kind who's...
Yeah, I don't know about planning so much. I almost think maybe parks and rackets would be more appropriate. Well, planning and zoning commission for, do you want them firing guns or not? I mean...
But I would think parks and rackets are more likely are on that, but we didn't want to guess. We both, I don't want to. Is that have to be referred anywhere?
Well, maybe it's a discussion more with the police department as far as how they can enforce it. If they can, how they can, or a recommendation from them that says, okay, you know, bird hunting this way is allowed and nothing else.
There ought to be any public hearing to change Jordan's role or just a wording because it requires shots.
Change order, chapter, public hearing.
Yeah, not always. Not all the resources.
You would want to get a public... Planning commission and parks and rackets, I think both should take a look at it, get their opinions.
Well, and they're, I mean, again, the police department isn't one that has to enforce it. Would it, to me, make sense that they can at least look at it?
Anything else under other?
I have...
Is there any, is there any consensus what you want to do?
I think there's something that has to be looked into because it's a, it's just kind of crowded.
If we have a great comment, we'll get some input and have him look at it.
Police chief look at it first.
A few places to start and see if...
Okay.
Lauren, what do you have under?
Um, I was just going to ask with the, of the earlier discussion with, um, the, with Rusty and the Little Falls golf fields, and there was a question brought up about having the engineer do some design work or look to see about placement of the fields. Is that something we want to consider? And if so, we should get direction from the council to do that, unless you want to wait and ask a question.
I'm sorry. Any great comment? Whole census can benefit the city. If we can do something in kind, I would, it's much better than throwing out a court of duty.
Is that all they're asking for right now?
Yeah.
More of a feasibility if it's doable.
When you're just the real...
Yeah, yeah, that's the only thing we're asking, Greg, is to try to lay out the fields. Take a look at it, see if we can place fields.
I'm three and letting Greg play with his compass.
I think from that point, I'm going to check into which is most economical, if you would. It's like land purchase one way, try to level out the other way, which one balances out better.
Need to check that or just on a...
Is that a consent?
Just consensus here? Just good?
I think you should check into it personally.
Check into?
Right now, checking if it's feasible, put a little plan together.
Right, do we have, do you want action on the regular council or is the consensus between us now is fine?
I would rather either see it on the regular agenda one way or the other, whether it's going to be a consent agenda rather than somewhere, or a form of that.
That's why it's a consensus now. Want to add on the consensus now or?
It's not like he has anything else to work on, right? Water systems and...
Yeah, I don't expect it to take much time, you know, to, to lay it out, but they give templates and whatever, engineering information, so.
Sort of an operating...
CAD systems or whatever.
Yeah, phrase break too.
Lockdown.
Just authorize staff for what?
Really give them no pipeline as he fits it in.
Anybody got anything else? That was done during the 7:30.